Everyone, at this time, I would like to call the regular committee of the whole for Tinley Park, being held today on Tuesday, January seventeenth, to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Brady?
Here.
Trustee Brennan?
Present.
Trustee Galante?
Here.
Trustee Mahoney?
Present.
Trustee Mueller?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
President Glass?
Present.
Thank you. We have everyone in attendance, so we have a quorum. Moving on to item number three, at this time, I look for a motion to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Bill. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll for item number three?
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. At this time, we will consider a liquor license classification adjustments for pet tie and avocado theory. Are you taking this one?
Yeah, I could just take it. This is just, uh, um, regular cleanup. Uh, we recently went through liquor license renewals, so this is just for two establishments who are no longer in need of their liquor licenses.
Sounds very good, and I believe this one's gonna be on the consent agenda later this evening, so we'll be looking for a motion to move this to the village board meeting later on this evening. Can I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, can you call the roll on item number four?
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Uh, at this time, we will hand it over to Dan for item number five, to consider an amendment to the tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with Peach Fresh Market.
Yeah, so this is, uh, Peach Fresh Market asking for an extension. The original deadline was the end of two thousand and twenty-two, so it's December thirty-first. They're looking to move that date to May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Their hope is that the project won't go that long, but they've kind of, um, the reason for the extension, there was delays kind of with, um, permitting processes with other entities. There was delays and a lot of the equipment and stuff they're gonna use in the stores. Um, also Chick-fil-A signed, uh, letter of interest, and so they were kind of needing to adjust the site plan a little bit. And there is a kind of, um, separate but similar request that'll be going forward tonight as well at the village board, uh, for the PUD amendment related to that, um, to get Chick-fil-A into one of the outlets. So they're looking to, again, just knowing that those delays kind of pop up, they're looking to make that date May fifteenth, just so they don't have to come back here again. The permit is issued, they're under construction out there. Um, and again, they're hopeful maybe they can finish this year, but they're just not willing to guarantee that, so that's why they pushed it out through spring of next year.
Sounds very good. You adding something, Hannah, or just looking this way? Okay.
Otherwise, all the other terms stay the same, so it's just the date we're changing.
Yep, sounds very good. Questions from the board? All right, at this time, I'll make a motion. We have to move this to the board tonight, right, Dan?
Yes.
Uh, to move item number five to the village board meeting later on this evening.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Bill. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll for item number five?
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Moving on to item number six, we have a new one from the marketing department. I know Donna had to step away unfortunately this evening. Are you taking this one, Pat?
Yes, I will. So as you've seen in Donna's memo, uh, marketing department's been working on a Independence Day event for July third. And it is a theme of like a barbecue-type-themed family event in the Eightieth Avenue, uh, parking lot with fireworks. And, uh, we've got a contract in front of you, uh, that's on consent for, uh, fireworks, uh, for that event.
Sounds very good. Pat, um, you know, I talked to Mr. Brady before this. He was extremely excited about fireworks. Anything you'd like to add?
No, bringing a match.
Pie eating. Any other questions from the board? Yes.
Um, I guess I'm, so we are gonna, so we already split the cost of fireworks with Park District, so we're gonna add a second night fireworks for fifty thousand. What is the whole cost for this event gonna be? Do you, um, have an idea?
Well, we're, yeah, we're not splitting the cost with Park District, uh, for this year's.
We're not gonna do that anymore?
No.
Are they a work event? I mean, we've always done that as a little.
We're doing our own event, which is, and it's to help lead up to all the events that we're gonna be having here in the coming years. And, uh, we're gonna handle it ourselves. It'll be more compact in the parking lot, ease of, uh, parking. Won't have an impact on traffic.
Here's my concern. Um, I've been doing the Park District events. It's a community event, encourages families. I do the five K with my family, um, haven't done it the last couple of years, but did it a lot of years. It's a great event. I guess I think it's excessive that we're gonna spend, regardless if the Park District is paying it, and I guess we're no longer splitting it with them, I think that's, uh, but, um, if we're not, regardless if the Park District pays it or we pay it, the taxpayers pay it. We're spending fifty thousand already on the Fourth of July. It's a beautiful event. If Donna wants to add these things to that and we work together as a community, we're one community here. Creating our own Fourth of July when we already have a beautiful Fourth of July, I don't understand that. This is, to me, now we're gonna have to decide, am I gonna go out at five-thirty at night and party, or am I gonna get up in the morning and do a five K with my family? And we're gonna split to the, our community. I, I don't understand why we wouldn't take that fifty thousand, and that's minimum. How much money, and I would like that, Anne, if you could get back with me, how much is this event gonna cost the taxpayers, um, in the Idi of Avenue transition?
Thanks.
We already have a beautiful event. It's a community event. Why would we start creating a new event when we already have something that's really nice? It's an all-day event. It's a five K. They sometimes have different things going on during the day for the kids. They have the, the music all night. It's packed there. We're not gonna double, I, I think it's excessive. I think for us to just have fireworks two days in a row and to split our village like this is a really poor idea. I just do. I like her ideas of adding a party, but not the next day, not the night before. Um, we already have community events that go on. We should consider, we are one community, regardless of its Park District or, or the schools, even the schools encourages. My son's, I remember the gym teacher from Millennium. All the families would be out there. We'd be competing against each other's families. I, I think this is, um, gonna be a detriment to, to a really nice community event we already have. And I, I question why all of a sudden we are not gonna split the cost. That was a budgeted item. So why are we not doing that now?
This is a program that the marketing department worked on, and we got it before the board for you to review.
What can I add?
Personally, I think that it is, um, that we're gonna, we're gonna hurt another event. And we're on the board over there, and I don't think we have anything to add to that. I just, I think we should work together for one community. The taxpayers don't need division in between our, now our, our departments in our own town. I, I, I think it's a nice idea to add another event, not the next day. Fireworks two days in a row is excessive. It's a hundred thousand dollars in fireworks. I could think of a, a couple, maybe some flashing lights we could have on walkways that would make it safer. Maybe we could put that money into fifty thousand dollars, two days in a row for fireworks, to me is excessive. There are a lot of towns that are having events all over. I don't see the value for this. I just don't.
Thank you, Diane. Mayor Glass?
I speak. Thank you. Uh, just to add to this part, uh, Pat, that, uh, you didn't touch on, part of the event already, the Village of Tinley Park, and it's all budgeted. All of the, all the, the police department that are there, that they're all in overtime, I think, Hannah, you, before this came forward, I think you looked into the budget cost. The Village of Tinley Park pays for all of the police overtime, all of the fire, it's not just about splitting, you know, a couple fireworks. We pay for everything. And the complaints that have come to Matt Walsh have been, um, excessive about constantly, it's, it's not about splitting the, the, uh, agencies. It's more about making it safer for our residents because Matt gets swamped with complaints about everyone parks on all the side streets. Anyone that lives anywhere near, uh, where they have the event, everyone double parks. You can't get ambulances through when there's a problem. You can't get police cars through when there's a problem. And Eightieth Avenue was shut down basically almost the whole day. And so it really creates a traffic jam because then anyone that goes down Eightieth, they have to go to one hundred and sixty-seven street, and they have to cut through neighborhoods through, I believe that street is Olicott, um, to cut through neighborhoods. And so it's more of a safety thing is why you guys looked into this. And moving it to Eightieth Avenue train station is, excuse me? Can I speak, please?
Sorry, just writing notes. I'm listening to you.
No, if I could just please speak without being interrupted.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Well, you're not. You're, you're making.
I'm sorry.
You're, you're commenting down there. Um, it's more about safety because on the Eightieth Avenue, no streets are blocked in the Village of Tinley Park, and all the police and the firemen that are there will be at the event for the village. So there actually, there is no difference. It's the same thing, other than us picking up that small difference for the fireworks. And we're not inconvenienced in the entire Village of Tinley Park to shut down Eightieth Avenue, and that's the biggest problem of why, when that came forward through staff, I supported it, and, you know, like Matt's made it very clear to everyone. It creates nothing but traffic jams with, throughout our towns, when we close down Eightieth Avenue because they all cut down the side streets and they double park on all people's streets, and no one could, and no one could get in and out of, of their own subdivision. And so it's very inconvenient. So I think it was a great idea, thinking out of the box, um, from our staff and marketing department that you guys saw that, because Eightieth Avenue doesn't disrupt anybody. It's, it will be on, where would the fireworks be? You said on the south side of the tracks?
Yes.
So no one will be interrupted. You won't have fireworks blowing off by, and, by people's houses. And, and then you'll have, the same event will be on the north side of the tracks, and no one will be inconvenienced. No subdivisions will be, uh, you know, will be, have all the traffic, so I, I think, I think.
It's not your. Diane, please.
Can I just clar, get a clarification? Are we not doing the Fourth of July then?
You don't have the floor. If you'd like the floor, you can ask for the floor.
You're right. Trying to make it, trying to understand everything.
You could finish.
Thank you. Um, so I, I, I commend the staff on coming up with this idea because it truly eliminates the traffic jam. And I don't, I don't believe they'll be able, I don't believe there'll be two events because with all the staff that'll be out there, I, we're not gonna have the EMA and the staff to then work. Diane, please, you constantly have to be interrupting me.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
You're not sorry because you keep doing it. Please stop.
We're gonna try to cancel the, the event we are.
Oh, my gosh.
I get it.
No, you don't get it. You, you're rude, and you constantly keep interrupting people. What you guys did is phenomenal because it, it's a game changer for the, for the rest of the community, so, so I don't get interrupted again. I'll just say thank you very much to all the staff that worked on this, and thanks, Chief, for supplying your input.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else like to speak on this item?
I would just like to say that I think it's great that Donna has, again, thinking outside the box that they did with the Caribbean, uh, party, you know, having it two days and the way they spread it all out, thinking outside that box. Thinking outside the box to, uh, do our own, uh, PR for our village instead of through the Chicago Tourism Bureau. And certainly the Christmas decorations and getting the people that make the benches to do the Christmas trees and having the various businesses have lights on it. So it is great to be thinking out of the box. That's, that's great to see. I commend her and her staff.
Thank you.
I just wanna kind of go with Bill Brady said. Uh, we, you know, voted on bringing our marketing in-house, and I think they're doing a great job with it. And they've proven everything that they ever organize is always successful. Um, I don't think, I think the block party having it two days proves that people like to go to events two days in a row. Um, I, there was like record number of people both days, so I don't, I don't see an issue with this. I think it's a, you know, the other events that we had there, like Oktoberfest, it's very well organized. I attended that. Parking was easy, getting in and out of the lot was easy, um, moving around the, you know, event was easy. It was well organized, and, uh, well, I know that was, uh, Chamber that did that, but still having that location, I think is a good location. I have faith in the marketing department with this event as well.
Fantastic. At this time, I'll look for a motion to move item number six to the village board meeting later on this evening.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Brady.
I'll second.
Thank you. I'll give it to Dennis. Sorry, calling.
That's okay.
And Madam Clerk, can you call the roll for item number six?
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
No.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
The motion carries five-one. Um, we'll move on to item number seven, where Anthony will discuss awarding an agreement with payment processing payment for our e-ticketing system.
Thank you. In January of two thousand and twenty-two, the village board approved a electronic solution, uh, ticketing solution, uh, provided by DAKRA. At that time, DAKRA did not allow for passing credit card fees to the customer. Now, through a partnership with Paymentis, this option is available. Passing the cost of a credit card processing fee to the customer is not uncommon. Uh, it'll mean if a violation is one hundred dollars and the person pays for that ticket online, the village will receive the entirety of that amount. Payments taken in person will not pass this credit card fee to the customer. The village will continue to absorb the approximately three percent credit card processing fee for violation payments that are made either at Village Hall or the police station. This is a request entering an agreement with Paymentis to provide online payment services for e-tickets and pass the two-point-five percent payment processing fee to the customer. Uh, this agreement would replace the current agreement, uh, with violations payments LLC, which was approved in the January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two village board meeting when the, uh, DAKRA was, uh, up for the vote. Uh, there is no cost to enter into this agreement to the village, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about it.
Thank you, Anthony. A pretty straightforward one, um, just for ticketing violation payments, uh, that will pass that fee on to the, the payer online. Any other questions from the board?
For in-house, um, payments, are we adding a fee? So we collect that, so they're paying their full amount of their fine?
So it's, it's difficult, and, and I don't wanna speak out of place and from, from financials. Um, you can't necessarily add a convenience fee unless there's a way to get around that convenience fee. So you can't say there would be a convenience fee for paying it in person and then not have that convenience, and also have a convenience fee online because then there's no way to escape the convenience fee. Um, it's certainly possible that we can look towards, uh, a payment processor that would allow us to either add a fee or even pass that, whatever percentage may be, to the customer for in-person payments. But with, with DAKRA specifically, it's just the online payment piece right now that has this ability to do that. It would require entering into another agreement and looking at considerably more payments for the village since we already have an established payment processor for in-person payments. So it's just trying to keep that separate for now, keep it the way it's always been, not to say it couldn't change in the future, um, but this is just for the specific online side.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Just one quick question. I just, was it a one-year agreement we had with the, the old processor? Is it, that's why there's no cost on this?
Uh, there's no cost because, so technically, that was an arm, uh, they, they had a relationship with DAKRA. Understood that it kind of came in through, I don't wanna get too much of the history, but there was an acquisition where DAKRA basically had a payment processor as a separate arm of their business. They didn't have that ability to, to do the service fee pass-through. Um, there is a, um, professional service fee between DAKRA and Paymentis where they're getting some sort of percentage back, I imagine, um, in order for them to make that money back so that there's no, no fee for us to, to end that agreement. We're still in the implementation phase. We haven't actually taken a payment on this payment processor yet either, so it's a nice and clean, easy break.
Thanks, Anthony. Any other questions for the board? At this time, I'll look for a motion to move the payment processing agreement to the village board meeting later on this evening.
So moved.
Thank you, Bill.
Awesome.
Thank you, Dennis. And Madam Clerk, can you call the roll for item number seven?
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Uh, item number eight, consider a contract with the sanitary system rehabilitation program to structured solutions. Mr. Avansky?
Yes, thank you. Uh, based on our maintenance program, we start, uh, um, smoke testing our sanitary systems to see if there's any infiltration, inflow and infiltration from, uh, surrounding, uh, supply, either be groundwater or, um, rain. And this, uh, system told us that we needed to have approximately thirty-three hundred linear feet of sanitary sewer and, uh, um, vertical structures lined. With that bid going out, we had, um, some alternates, um, awarded, and the recommendation here is to, um, award the alternates, um, two and three to the contractor. That is shown as the low bid, which is structured solutions at five hundred and thirteen dollars, five hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. It does show that we are over budget, um, but keep in mind that we have a forty-five thousand dollar contingency, so I'd like to stick with my, uh, you know, continued efforts of staying under budget on these projects. And hope that we can, uh, continue to not, not use all of this contingency and stay under budget on this, asking for a committee and board to, to forward it to the board.
Thank you, John. Questions about item number eight from the board?
Got a question, Mike?
Go ahead.
Hey, John, when, when is it necessary to have this passed?
When is it necessary to have it passed? Um, well, we received the bids on December twentieth, so we're just looking for.
When would you plan on starting?
More than likely because everything else has a lead time. The linings are probably gonna have a little bit of a lead time on them, so we'd like to get this, uh, contract signed and awarded so we can, um, have the contractor order the materials. More than likely, they'll be starting, uh, soon as the, the weather breaks over the, the winter here.
Because they can't line if there's moisture or any water in the line anyways, so I'm assuming they probably wouldn't be able to start until April. Have they said anything to you about that?
No, but I would, I would say that's probably a good assumption. I mean, if we get, continue to have a nice winter like we're having right now and maybe earlier.
Well, not with the moisture. They can't do it. It's too wet, and you can't line with the moisture in the ground. My only concern is, and I apologize, there's too much going on. I, I wasn't able to contact you. Um, how's this co, company going to do this? I believe, I don't have my notes. I believe they're, if it's the same company, I looked online, they're well over, they're four hours away from, from here.
So more than likely, they're going to mobilize and have all of their equipment here. Um, a lot of these, um, companies that do, a lot of these bidding for the linings are kind of mobile. And obviously, as you know, they, they set up their vehicles and travel site to site to do this work, because I, I know a couple of these other companies are also, uh, you know, not very local.
Yeah, the problem is when we, a lot of times when companies come here that are not from the area, sometimes they have trouble, um, following all the guidelines.
Well, we do have, uh, you know, our contract, or, or contracted services with the engineer that's gonna be monitoring this project.
Is that on the board tonight, too?
Yes, sir. And I, I did ask them at the, at the, um, bid meeting that I had with them after this was opened, to do their research on the contractor, because I did see that they were out of state, and, uh, all of their references checked.
If it's not a problem, I would just suggest we push it to the next meeting. If it is, then you guys can pass it if you think that's necessary, but I think there's, I think there's some questions that need to be asked about the location. Because if they mobilize and they come here, and as we all know, sometimes we've looked, the weather said it was gonna be dry, and we get two inches of rain and vice versa. And if they come here and they can't do the work, then what happens? I just, I don't wanna be getting charged to pay company mo, charges back and forth if they can't do the project because, you know, they're four hours away. That's my, that's my biggest concern with their location.
Well, re-mobilization due to weather, I mean, we're safe from that in our contract. We shouldn't be paying for any re-mobilization if their, their planning doesn't allow for it, and they decide to send their crews out here and have to turn right back around. That's, that's not on us.
Who's gonna be in charge from our end to determine whether they should put the liner in or not?
It'll be Burke, Burke Engineering.
It's up to you guys. I just, I think for something like this, with how far they are away, I just, I think it's, there's a lot of questions that still need to be asked, but it's up to you guys.
It's up to you, sir, if you have.
Is this something that'll be detrimental? I mean, if we, if we do push it off the next month, I mean, I, I know, and we are in the winter months here. I, right. I know there's lead times on materials or something. Maybe, maybe we could take a little deeper dive and discussion, just to make sure everybody's on the same page.
As I understand right now, I don't see any detriment to it. I would obviously have to reach out to the, um, you know, engineering group, but I don't see any reason why waiting a couple weeks would be an issue.
Okay.
I, I mean, just to add, the next lowest bidder is eighty thousand more, and they're still two hours away as well, so it's not like any local companies that are close for us, and we're already over budget, so I don't.
I'm just adding that, and that's all.
Besides the budget, my, my other concern is, which I wanna talk to John, you have three bids that are all within the same price. And two are local, the other one, like you said, is two hours away. Did you look at it?
The, the next, that's the next close.
The guy that's the lowest, that's four hours away, that's, I, I struggle with the fact that they're gonna be, what is it, a hundred thousand less, or what's the difference again?
Eighty, eighty thousand.
Yeah, eighty thousand less, and they're four hours away. I just, I think we're looking for trouble. I just, then we need to do a little bit more due diligence, but like I said, if you can wait, great. I would just ask the board to wait till the next meeting. If not, then feel free to go ahead and pass it.
With the timing, this is, the next meeting's the seventh, so it's.
Because you, you can't install, you can't install liners.
Yeah, I understand.
If there's any type of moisture in the ground whatsoever.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it's not, it's not like a, the usual two weeks until the next meeting. It's three weeks, just with the way the calendar lies. And John, is three weeks a problem?
Again, um, you know, at, at the last minute, Doc, you know, asking us, I, I can't tell you with, you know, beyond a doubt that it wouldn't be an issue, but I know, a, as we all know here, everything's got lead times on it, but if there's concerns that we need to, you know, ask further questions. Again, I, I, all I know is that, you know, when we had the, um, bid meeting after, um, after the, the openings were, and I, I specifically mentioned, um, that concern that I had also that they were out, asked, out of state contractor, and, um, I asked Burke to do, uh, research on their references, and I did not hear any negative, uh, aspects of that. But if we have, uh, we wanna dig a little bit deeper to make sure we're, um, you know, feel warm and fuzzy about this, I, I, I don't see an issue with delaying it a couple weeks.
Question.
Go ahead, Diane.
We already did the bid process. We have a policy on a bid process. Delaying it, what, what's it gonna, what could we change? We can't change our process and award it to somebody else, so what would, what would delaying?
Well, I mean, in, in all, um, to answer your question, not just this, but for any bid process, uh, you, you have the power as the committee to deny the whole bid altogether. Um, you have the ability to, um, you know, not go with our recommendations of, uh, awarding alternate two and three. You can all, award all three of them. You can award none of them. You guys all have the power to do what you would like here, but, uh, um, you know, to answer that question, um, separate from this current bid, again, this is a, this is a staff recommendation. It's up to, up to the board here to act accordingly.
I'm certainly fine with moving it forward tonight. Um, I don't know, Paul, if we make that motion and it stops, can we just bring it to the next meeting, or do we have to make a motion?
We can move it forward to the board agenda tonight, and if we wanna postpone it to the next meeting at the board on the jump board agenda, we can do that, and then bring it back at the next board meeting, or we can award it, or we can deny.
If you're looking, if you're looking to table it, quite honestly, I, I personally would prefer to, that we have this conversation at the next committee meeting.
Okay.
Instead of tabling, having a conversation at the board meeting.
What about just passing it? Just let them do some other due diligence. This way, there's not a three-week, three-week delay. If they pass the stiff test with being four hours away and being eighty grand less than someone that's local, or actually, the two local companies are a hundred and thirty grand less than a lo, than a local companies. Kim is in Stager. They're right down the street. Benchmark is in Batavia. National Power Riding, I don't know where they're at, but they're three times the amount.
They didn't want the job.
Paul, could we just pass it?
I think what you're asking for is for John to go back and get clarification that they can perform the bid and can perform it at the level for the dollars that you're asking. I think that's what you're asking, right? And so why, why award it? I mean, you're looking, seems to me like you wanted John to go back and get clarification on this stuff. So leave it at this level, continue it, and bring it back next time. That's my recommendation.
So make a motion to continue it to the next committee, the whole meeting?
Postpone, or motion to continue it to the next, yeah, motion to postpone to the next count.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to postpone to the next count.
I'll second it.
Can I add one thing, too?
Go ahead.
If, um, do you have any companies to compare it to? Like, we have, I don't, you know, I, I don't know the location of all these contractors that we've used in the past. Have we ran into this before? Where we've had a contractor that, in the same situation, that performed just fine, being four hours away?
So, um, we do, we, where we have, um, bid out, um, pipe lining, uh, CIPP lining, and, uh, structure lining. You know, as you see in the bids, they're, you know, they're, some of them are fairly competitive. Um, to answer your question, as I understand it, if. To answer your question, as I understand it, if you're looking to see what other people would be charging, the problem I have is, is the last time we bid this out was pre-COVID. So as we're all aware again, not only are things delayed, but everything is 20% plus, you know, above what we're used to seeing for costs for materials and, uh, labor.
Thank you. So there's a motion on the table to postpone it to the next cow, which is on February 7th. Madam Clerk, can you call the role on that motion?
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Uh, back to you again, John, for item number nine, for a 110-foot monopole at Post 20.
Yes, thank you. Post 20 is the new lift station that is being constructed for the Loyola facility and, uh, any future development in that La Grange Road corridor. Uh, the, um, original construction called for a, um, communications tower. After, um, doing some evaluations in that area, we realized that we had some need for, um, additional elevation. Along with the current, uh, equipment is located on a WLS tower, and there is, uh, you know, rumors about, uh, potentially having to remove that from that location. Uh, that is only mounted at a, I believe, a 60-foot elevation. So it is our request to, um, purchase a monopole tower. The infrastructure will be installed by the already approved Spies Construction. And, uh, we will have a contractor, uh, put the monopole tower on the, um, pre-rolled concrete footing once, uh, that is all complete out there. Purchase of, of the, uh, tower itself is, uh, $45,000, um, not to exceed $45,500.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board? Diane?
Just, just for clarification, this, this, um, monopole is really nothing to do with the lift station. We're just, it's really for communication. We're just putting it on there.
It actually, so the lift station does have, um, point-to-point communication requirements for the SCADA system and, uh, the other control, uh, utilities in that site, but it also is going to afford us, um, again, relocation of existing, uh, public safety, uh, equipment to that tower.
Okay. So public safety is, that's what that's usually?
Yes. Police, fire, public works, public safety band, all of the radio equipment that we utilize in town here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for John for the 110-foot monopole? At this time, I'll look for a motion to move item number nine to the village board meeting later on this evening.
Make the motion?
Thank you, Colleen.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dennis. Madam Clerk, can you call the role for item number nine?
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. We're gonna start coughing, counting coughs as positive votes as well.
This is the season.
Yeah. Uh, item number 10, consider awarding a contract to Utility Dynamics for the Odyssey LED street lighting system. Mr. Urbansky again?
Yes, thank you. As we are looking to upgrade our, uh, infrastructure in the Odyssey area, it was found that, uh, a lot of the equipment was installed substandard to request to have the, um, street lighting infrastructure in its entirety. We put that out to bid. We received two bids for the project. The, um, bids came in well over our available budget, again, due to costs of material and labor. Um, we are asking for this to be broken up into two phases to utilize the bid process. We will have the, um, low bidder for this year, uh, order all of the materials because the light poles are pushing, um, over, uh, a 50-week lead time on, uh, at some points. So we're requesting to utilize the funding available of $560,000. And because the bid went out as a unit cost, we're able to break apart, um, pretty much everything into, um, keeping it under budget, get the stuff on order, and then, uh, reutilize, uh, again, Utility Dynamics bid, which, uh, was at the time they are willing to hold their costs if we sign a contract with them for installation to happen that next fiscal year.
Sounds very good. Questions for the board on the LED lighting in the Odyssey subdivision? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to move item number 10 to the village board meeting later on this evening.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Colleen.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dennis. Madam Clerk, can you call the role for item number 10?
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries six to zero. At this time, we will receive comments from the public. Would anybody like to address the committee of the whole? This is the committee of the whole? Anyone else? Let the record reflect, there was none. And at this time, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Colleen, thank you, Bill. And Madam Clerk, can you please call the role for adjournment?
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Galante?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. We adjourned at 6:37 PM and the village board meeting will start pretty quickly, right?
Yep.